Hello, beautiful people. Welcome to this week's episode of the Montpelier Happy Hour here on WVW 107.7 LP Brattleboro, your community radio station. I'm your host and producer of the show, Olga Peters. I'm very happy to be here. I'm also really happy to welcome this week's guest, Meg Mott, who is a self-proclaimed Constitution wrangler. She is also the Putney Town moderator and a proponent of something we will talk about today called the Good Clash. So, hey, Meg, I'm glad you're here.
Hi, Olga. Thank you so much for inviting me. I love talking to you.
Same here, same here. Yeah, everybody are about to see a very geeky conversation because Meg and I like can totally nerd out on civics. So grab your cup of coffee and actually, before we start, I want to just take a quick pause, Meg, and just hold up my tin of coffee here. And I want to give a huge thank you to everyone who showed up for town meeting, who brought the pies, who made amendments, who cast their primary ballot for the presidential primary. And I also want to toast folks who couldn't go to a town meeting because they had small children and there was no childcare or they had to work and they couldn't get time off from work. I want to acknowledge you folks too because you really need to be there. And unfortunately, we have systems right now that don't allow you to be. And I think that's kind of a part of a problem that we need to work on, in my own opinion. But anyway, toast to all of you. So, thank you for town meeting. And Meg, you know, I have to say, you and I have talked about town meeting before. And we've certainly talked during the pandemic about town meeting and how much upheaval that was, you know, going to Zoom and not having in-person meetings and how do we wrangle all that? And in many ways, this year should have been, and I think for many people it was, just kind of a normal town meeting year, nothing fancy. And yet, to me, it felt quietly significant that there are things happening at town meeting that really are a big deal. And I'm curious, from your post behind the podium at Putney's town meeting on Tuesday, do you feel the same way? What were you seeing?
Um, yeah, I definitely feel, Olga, that this year was more significant than last year. And some of that may have to do with the fact that the first meeting right out of COVID, and Putney did have an in-person meeting last year. I know not all towns did.
Yeah, dumbest thing, this was their first in-person since the pandemic.
Wow, so long time. Yeah, so last year in Putney, it just felt like everybody was waking up together, like, oh, you're still here. Isn't that fun? You're still here. And Eva Monden, who passed away this summer, at the end of the summer, she was at that last year's town meeting. And so there was Eva being Eva and reminding us of how important it was to think about people who weren't here, or how important it was to be a town in which the gun club had as much status as the general store, and that we were a diverse community in all sorts of ways. So Eva wasn't with us this year. Definitely felt her absence. But this year was also very significant because towns are struggling with property taxes. And a big concern that was raised early on when we were approaching the article that has to do with the general fund was how much is the state going to ask of towns for schools? And there've been rumors as high as 20%. Some of the elected officials or school board reps who were there said, no, we don't think it's going to be that high, but nobody knows. So that kind of anxiety is never good.
Right.
Don't want people to spend time deliberating, going through the arduous process of trying to reach a decision, a reasonable decision, a responsible decision, when you don't have all the information. And we didn't. So that was creating some distress, reasonable, reasonably so. And then the other piece is, I think that all towns periodically during town meeting time, and select boards know this all the time, towns in Vermont actually have very limited jurisdiction. There's only so much that towns can control. This becomes a very big deal when we're talking about, can't we get more sidewalks? Can't we slow traffic? What's going? Most of these towns are state highways, the main street. And towns have very, very little power to actually ameliorate traffic.
Oh, sometimes even putting up stop signs.
Even putting up a stop sign or a crosswalk. Wow. So there's the myth of town meeting and what we can do for ourselves. And there's the reality of town meeting, which is, there's very little that we can actually do as citizens to control our public spaces.
Yeah.
So, you know, on the one side, that could feel like, so what's the point? Why even have town meeting? And I'm still a big proponent, and we can go into that later, but I do feel like having this pause, the pandemic pause, made it so the myth is less believable. Because now we're just faced with, okay, here we are. We're sitting together. We don't have all the facts. That's kind of sad. We don't have that much power. That's kind of sad. But can we still do something together in which we feel good about the outcome?
Right.
Yeah.
I love how you said that, Meg, the myth and reality of town meeting. Because this year, I was actually late to Whitingham's town meeting by a good hour, which in Whitingham is, in Brattleboro, they'd still be like sitting down from coffee. In Whitingham, they're about three quarters way through the warning. So I missed a lot of the big budget votes. And I arrived in time for a lot of the smaller votes, like $250 for such and such an organization, and $1,000 for the food bank, and, you know, those service organization votes. And I was feeling bad about that until I realized that part of me wasn't showing up for that town meeting. The part of me was showing up for the town meeting that happened afterwards. You know, the Select Board actually had some questions for folks in the audience, saying, we just, we want to take an informal poll. We don't normally get to see this many people. So, you know, here are our questions. Standing in line to vote and talking to Gretchen, who had just been to Wilmington's town meeting and hearing about how their vote, they voted to keep town meeting rather than go to Australian ballot. So getting to hear about that, having lunch prepared by the local church and seeing, you know, that was the town meeting that actually excites me. And I feel where some really deep work happened. Do you see that at Putney? Is that part of your?
Um, well, so at Putney, we tend to begin at 10:00 and not, if we end by 4:00, we're doing well. So we are marathon runners. And I would say a lot of people show up, particularly this time, who were concerned about the budget. And having a chance to hear their concerns was probably going to be the best thing that happened in town meeting. But because a question was called, we did have a two-thirds majority, did require a division in order to count the hands. It took a long time, but we never really heard all the complaints about the budget.
You know, I would love if you would back up for listeners, because we talked a little bit about this before we started recording. And you actually, the town manager, didn't they lay out like some kind of frequently asked questions about this year's budget?
Yeah.
And that seems significant. And that's what you actually didn't get to really dig into, right? Because the question was called.
Exactly. Yeah. So in our town report, we always get the budget. But I think this may be new this year, or maybe Karen Astley, our town manager, has already done this. But at the end of the pages and pages, itemize all the items on the general fund budget. She had a page that was fiscal, notes for the fiscal year 2025, in which she had bullet points of big ticket items. So in a way, it was an invitation for people to consider some of these big ticket items. But, you know, I operate by the will of the voters. And I operate under Robert's rules. So we allow people to call the question. It's a high bar. It takes two-thirds vote for that to pass. But for whatever reason, it was fairly early. It was before lunch. Now, the sound system was not good this year. And there was a lot of static, a lot of feedback. I think that makes people angry. You know that term angry? Well, I think there's stangry for static anger. Stangry. People were stangry. So two-thirds of the voters said, we're going to call the question. So before we had had a chance to really get into some of these items that might have been able to knock down the budget, we didn't ever get to talk about them. So that was it. It was called the question. There's no debate on that. Once the question has been called, there's no debate on the item anymore.
Yeah, it just goes out.
That's right. So, and this can be very frustrating. And Robert's rules, when people do this too often, can lead to a big problem of democracy, and that's tyranny of the majority.
Dig into that a little bit.
Well, if you can cut off debate with a two-thirds majority, that means, and we had, I can't remember the exact numbers, but there was maybe, it was less than 10, and the total number was over 100. So less than 10 discrepancy between those who wanted to call the question and those who didn't want to call the question. Why we had to do division, because I really couldn't ascertain. And it's not a half, it has to be two-thirds. So it's fairly complicated math, super majority. So a super majority can just keep calling questions. Then you're never going to hear from the minority. And so all sorts of things can get ramrodded through. I don't know if that's a verb, but it is now. So that's not good. If we think, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, go finish that thought.
Well, I was just going to say, if we see town meeting, I mean, what do we come hoping from town meeting? Is that we just want to get all our side to win? Then Robert's rules is going to be great. If you actually want to hear from people who don't often get a chance to speak, who may have a minority position, well, you have to have the sensibility to give that kind of space to dissent. And this is something towns struggle with, I think.
Hmm, interesting. Well, you know what I'm finding interesting? Just using that example of the Putney's budget and the calling the question. We don't always know why people vote. There could have been people who wanted to debate, but like you said, they were stangry and angry at that point. If it was allowed, it might have been better to just say, you know what? We're all stangry and angry. Let's go have lunch and we'll come back to this. I don't know if Robert's rules allows something like that, but my point being that we, because debate was called, we don't actually know what the majority or the minority were, opinions were, because we never even got into debate.
Right, right.
And so that's the one downside I think I hear is that it can create, or this situation particularly, may have created a false majority or a false minority, because we never actually all came to the table and talked things through.
Exactly, exactly. I did recommend that we take a recess in the middle to see if we could get the sound problem. But again, I follow the will of the voters, and they wanted to persevere. So that's how it went. And that, to me, raises a question, Olga, of what do we need to be doing outside of town meeting?
Yes.
We're putting a lot of pressure on one day. And we're hoping people are going to be well enough to attend on that day. And as you said earlier, there's a lot of people who just can't attend on that day. So if that's our only time to pass a budget, that's not great. But if there were more informational meetings ahead of time, if there were more opportunities to say, okay, let's go see what's possible, or what dissenting opinions have we not heard, let's go look for them. And then let's have an informational meeting in which we don't even need, at some point, we don't necessarily need to have the Select Board running that. We just need to have people talking to each other. What you described at the end of the Whitingham, where Select Board was just trying to get some ideas, that is always a little dicey, because you can never do something called Committee of the Whole in Robert's rules. You can't do strong votes. It's a very formal process. They don't, they want everyone to understand when they are involved in the decision-making process and not do things that might give a decision without everybody understanding that's what they're doing. So those things should happen outside of Robert's rules, that try to figure out what people are actually thinking, approaching a topic from more than two points of view, three points of view is great. And not get into a false sense of majority rule.
Yeah, you know, it's, just to play devil's advocate, I agree with you. And yet, we do have opportunities for people to talk outside of town meeting. They're all committees are open to the public. Select Board meetings are open to the public. So there are opportunities for people to engage in the process. And yet, I feel a lot of Select Board meetings are often empty. And there are no members of the public. So what do you say to that if we need to gather conversations and opinions outside of town meeting? But it seems like the other opportunities maybe aren't being taken advantage of or can't be taken, like, where do we go from there?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, because you are so right. There's a lot of access to our public officials. So why don't people go and try and get the different points of view put in front of the Select Board? I'm going to speak completely hypothetically. I'm not saying anything that I've seen particularly in any one place.
Okay.
And what I could, what I'd say is that many town, again, it's going to be town, not state, but many towns, the people who are running the show, they already got a majority in running.
Oh, meaning they got, because they were voted in?
Because they were voted in.
Okay.
And if you are part of a more conservative clientele or part of the population, you may feel like you'll never even have a chance to get voted in, if people know you're conservative. And that's not true of all towns, but I'm going to say Wyndham County, that could be a case, in many, many towns. If you are Republican or have interests in Republican policies, I don't think you have a chance. So there's many things in which our democratic process, because we do have a super majority, many, many people fall more to the left in Vermont than to the right, even though I know Nikki Haley won this state, because many people can take any ballot, and many people took the Republican ballot. But on the whole, Vermont does not have a robust Republican or conservative presence. So at that point, it's going to be harder to convince those people to come forward to talk to elected officials. So I think, given our polarization, we actually need to do something prior. This is why it's something outside of the public meetings to say, all right, this gets to the Good Clash. Let's take an issue. Let's explore it. Let's find the best arguments from a libertarian point of view. And then let's consider it from a conservative point of view, because those two are not the same. And then let's take the best arguments from a progressive point of view, and really like hold all three about one issue. And then let's look at the worst arguments from progressives.
Right.
Libertarians and conservatives. So they were doing something inside our heads to make room for new types of arguments. And that's going to be hard in really heavily blue or heavily red states. You have to do the mental effort because the minorities are so in the corner that they're not going to want to stick their heads out, necks out.
Well, it almost makes me think of, we need like the adult version of the debate club. Where you're taking an argument for the purpose of debate, not necessarily because it's what you personally believe.
Yes.
But it's for the purpose of debate.
Right, exactly. Yeah. When you think of the 19th century discourse, I mean, there were lyceums. People were debating things. People studied elocution. All the school kids are reading Cicero to figure out how to come up with a great sentence to persuade somebody, because their spirits are just so moved by the words that are being used, the metaphors that are being tapped into. That's the, like, that's the part of civics I want to bring back.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, well, I can see your point, because it does feel a little bit, I think you use the phrase, we're finally woke, we woke up after the pandemic, and we're like, oh, we're all here again. We need to talk to each other. It feels like we've lost a lot of just those general conversational muscles.
Yes.
You know, how to have a conversation when you agree to disagree, or to be able to debate without making it personal.
Right.
I probably say this because as someone who had a strong classics education and a strong English literature education, you did argue for the sake of arguing. Not for the sake of being right, but for the sake of arguing.
Well, and what did you get? Do you mind if saying a little bit about that? Like, by studying the classics or studying English, what did you, what did you gain that you couldn't find anywhere else, Olga?
Good question. I think I gained, I think I gained, gained curiosity that I actually, I started to look forward to hearing other people's point of view. And it was fun, especially when we were debating in class, this is my college class. You know, we read from the canon of the times. But then we also had a number of teachers who actively looked for writers and authors outside the canon. But some of the best discussions were about the books within the canons, because people had really deep-seated feelings about them. And, you know, to this day, I do not like the character of Pip from Great Expectations. Makes me crazy. And my friend absolutely loves the book, and we still debate about it. And it's just, it's fun. It's fun to hear other people's point of view. And like I said, we weren't always arguing to be right. We were arguing to find other aspects of the stories. Does that make sense?
And I love how you just said other aspects of the story, and that you then go to literature. Why do we read fiction? Because, okay, we may not love all the characters, but we begin to see how they respond to each other. And how they're so reactive or caught up in these social connections. And really, are people saying their own free, by their own free will, or are they just responding to what somebody else said? And as the reader, you just go in and say, whoa, I totally understand this, because they all must be inside me. Like waking up a part of me is like, oh, I didn't know other people had those feelings. I'm kind of ashamed of those feelings, but there's that character just like in the midst of them. Ah, that happened.
Yep. And how often we don't like the characters that usually remind us of us.
Right, exactly. Dang. Olga, I have to just share a book with you.
Okay.
Maybe you know this. This is The Colombian Orator.
No, I don't know that.
So this is what schoolchildren in the United States, before and after the Civil War, how they learned. We didn't have mass public education. It was basically homeschooling. So this is a book published in Boston, but it went all over. So this is what Frederick Douglass learned.
Oh, really?
Learned to read, how all schoolchildren learn to read through this book. And what this book has is very, it's called A Variety of Original and Selected Pieces, Together with Rules Calculated to Improve Youth and Others in the Ornamental and Useful Art of Eloquence. So you have little snippets from Cicero, little snippets from Shakespeare, little snippets from great authors, great speakers, Cato, George Washington. But here's the thing, it's got all these little debates in it. And you might be surprised who these dialogues are talking about. Some of them are a widow who's being thrown out of her apartment where she's been living. And it's between the landlord and the widow, and the widow convinced the landlord that justice is on her side. It's between a Native American chief and an English duelist, and they're going back and forth. And by the end, it's quite clear that the English duelist is a barbarian, because he kills his friends for no reason. Whereas the Native American is only kills who's absolutely unnecessary to protect the tribe, the families.
Oh, interesting.
It totally subverts a lot of things that we think about the old white guys back in the day and what they were thinking about. But the one that captured Frederick Douglass's attention was one between a master and a slave. The slave has run away and then is caught and brought back. And the master can't believe that the slave has done this. Why would you, why would you not honor me and run away from me? I do everything for you. And the slave says, okay, you're speaking to me as a man. I'll speak back to you as a man. What right have you to own me? And he goes, look, here's my bill of sale. He goes, that's not right. That was thievery. And by the end of the short dialogue, the slave convinces the master to set him free because of eloquence. And the eloquence is not just beautiful language. It's also, are you out of your mind? All these people hate you, and if they have a chance, they're going to kill you in your sleep. But we could be your friends if you set us all free. And that's what these schoolchildren are reading. Even in Maryland, slave owners are reading this. This is how they learn to read and write.
Interesting. Okay, I'm going to have to check that book out.
Yeah.
I'm intrigued.
I want to bring it back.
Well, I want to talk more about that, because it raised some questions in my head. But we do have to hear from some underwriters here on WVW 107.7 LP Brattleboro, your community radio station. Meg Mott and I will be right back to talk more about civics and discussion and debate and all those fun nerdy things. So stay tuned. Welcome back to the second half of the Montpelier Happy Hour here on WVW 107.7 LP Brattleboro, your community radio station. If you're just joining us, I am your host and producer, Olga Peters. And I'm speaking with Meg Mott, who is a constitutional wrangler, Constitution wrangler, Putney Town moderator and a proponent of the Good Clash, aka debate and debating issues and getting into the core issues of what we want in a community and what we want in our society. So Meg, thank you for being here. And, oh, hey, Meg, I'm throwing this at you, total spontaneous. We have to remind listeners of something right now. I think you've been on the show enough that you might know what that is, but do you dare take a guess?
Is it a trivia question?
No. So normally Emily would be here, but as we know, Emily had to step away because of her work with the legislature. So it falls to me to remind listeners that the views and opinions here on the Montpelier Happy Hour are those of the hosts and the guests. And that's it, not the platform. And that's it, not the platform, not any. Media stations that pick up the, the video version of our show, not the radio station, nobody, not even our house plants. So it's just us. So if you want to, if you want to get grumpy with anyone, you can get grumpy with Meg and I. You can email me at the montpelier happy hour at gmail dot com, even if you want to get grumpy. Um, so Meg, um. I really loved what you were saying at the end of the first half about debate. And eloquence, and you mentioned the Colombian orator. And I have a couple of questions from that. The first one is, do you happen to know why we don't? Still kind of practice that in schools now? Outside of something like a debate club.
Um, well, I don't know why Vermont is one of less than twelve states that does not require civics upon graduation. I do not know that.
Oh.
It's, that's a puzzle to me. Um, so, uh, obviously Vermont is not wanting to put civics front right now.
Mm hmm.
And the people who are promoting civics as Secretary of State's office, they have a new civics initiative.
Yeah.
In terms of the actual history, and I am not a historian on this topic.
Mm hmm.
But just in my professional life. Um. When, and, and, and you know, oh, there was a lot in the Obama administration that I thought was terrific. But one of the things I didn't like was this whole idea of the scorecard. Now that was for higher education. But, um, for good reasons, I don't want to say these are bad reasons, I'm not impugning anybody. But, uh, humanities took a nosedive.
Mm hmm.
And, uh, in order to. Improve productivity stem. Uh, what is that? Science, technology, engineering and math. Fields were promoted.
Mm hmm.
There was also, and, and so. At a certain point, we stopped being citizens and we started being consumers. Now that's way before the Obama administration. I think John Kenneth Galbraith was talking about sort of mass mind, mass education. And that it, uh, we weren't developing. Sovereign entities, these individuals who are very complex and were able to hold multiple points of view at the same time. But we became much more interested in creating productive workers.
Hmm.
And who has time for debate when you're just trying to increase the GDP? So.
Or you're a worker in that system just trying to hit the punch card at the right time, so you don't get docked in pay.
You don't get docked in pay, yeah. So I don't know, I think the, the spill offs from that have been sad and I hope we can turn it around. Uh, somehow citizens has become a word you're not supposed to say in certain circles. I don't get that.
Oh, that's new. I hadn't heard that one.
Yeah, um, we don't need to go into that now, but, um, yeah, I've been called out for using that term. Um. And, and I think, you know, it's because not, uh, all people are citizens here, we have residents. And under, uh, immigration and concern for the well being of immigrants. Uh, that the notion of saying citizens is somehow exclusionary.
Hmm, mm hmm.
Although the only people studying civics in Vermont. Are immigrants who are taking the US citizenship test.
That is a very good point.
So, I don't know. Uh, but there, there does seem to be a devaluing of the humanities and an increase in people's earning capacities.
Mm hmm, okay. Oh, that's sad, but yes, I can see what you're saying.
Mm hmm.
Oh, well, it does lead me to my next question of. We, we, I think you and I. Love the democratic process for a lot of reasons. One of them is it does allow for debate. And it does allow for dissent in ways that other forms of government do not allow. However, we also need to acknowledge that. Historically, a lot of folks have been left out of our democratic process. And even right now in bringing this back to town meeting. We have people who either can't attend because of work or childcare or, um. Transportation, whatever reason, they can't actually make it to. The school or wherever the meeting's being held. But there's also folks who just are uncomfortable.
Mm hmm.
Negotiating something like Roberts Rules or speaking in public, you know, so there's kind of a lot of reasons people may not participate. So how do we make it? So that, um. More people can participate.
Hmm.
In, in our democratic process and. I will say this, you know, one thing I'm sitting with that I find very fascinating right now is. A number of. The folks I heard, uh, speak in, in the media. On the decision to, for some towns to go to all Australian ballot. Rather than having floor votes is it's more inclusive. You know, you can vote early, you don't have to, you can vote by mail, you know, you can, you get more. You get a better representative, representation. Sure, I can't talk today, I, I'm, I'm going to blame the rain, I'm totally blaming the rain. Um, making my brain soggy. But, and, and I agree with that, and yet there are. Portions of town meeting. That help cultivate. Community.
Uh huh.
They cultivate our civic muscles to talk directly. To our leaders and our elected officials. So there's, there's other things that town meeting does. That is about equity and inclusion. And it, it, it's like, so how, how do we? How do we move all of that forward?
Mm hmm.
And I will stop rambling now.
Oh, no, no, that's, and that's a great question. Um, and I, I think I would probably go with inclusive rather than equitable.
Okay.
I, I have a very specific understanding of that word equitable. It's usually something that courts are able. To do in a remedy to make sure that the person who is harmed is made whole. And, and it makes a lot of sense in a, uh, tribunal, a legal tribunal where you really get to get into the details. Like what would make a person whole?
Hmm.
Sometimes when we do that as public policy, I, I don't think we have enough details in order to say, okay, what is an equitable solution?
Mm hmm.
Um, equality, equality would be, um, equal access. Uh, but equity means we're looking at outcomes and outcomes is usually. Well, Aristotle would say it's an adjudicative process, it's looking backwards, it's trying to make a remedy for something. Of a harm of the past, whereas policy is going forward. So, uh, equal protection under the law is our law and that's going forward, that the law can't treat some people differently than others.
Mm hmm.
So, um, but so to get at your question about town meeting. Um. Is it? Is it creating equality? Is it being inclusive when it happens once and sometimes it happens on a workday?
Mm hmm.
And, um. It requires childcare, it requires transportation, but it also requires taking the time to read through the report. Which means that you need to have some understanding of budgets. I mean, there's a lot of, there's certain, um. Bars you have to reach in order to be able to fully participate.
Mm hmm.
Particularly in town meetings when so many of these decisions have been made and then they are presented. Are you for this budget or are you against this budget?
Mm hmm.
I'm going to focus on budgets because that's the hot one.
Yeah, yeah.
So many towns. Uh, okay, so.
Well, and it's the one that towns are required to do, like we're not necessarily, there are other parts of the, uh, the, um, warning that we're not required to do, but are there. Per an individual town, but budgets.
Budget, yeah. Key thing, um, so how do we get more people involved in the decision making process around a budget? I, and, and so I'm, I'm looking at Putney's, uh, town report and there was an item there, I'm just going to pick one because it's such a beautiful one to focus on. There was an increase proposed and then passed in the pool budget of eight thousand dollars and that was an increase. Of sixteen percent, almost seventeen percent. So that was, uh, indicated by the town manager, this has been a, a high ticket item. So way prior to town meeting, and I'm going to be so optimistic here, and people who, who do this sort of work will say, oh, you're out of your mind.
Uh.
What would it be like in a town that had such a item on their budget? To say, okay, let's talk about what we have available in our town during the summer months for our kids. And what does it cost? We're going to have to be clear about this. We can't just say the town can do this because maybe the town can't.
Mm hmm.
And you have to begin all discussions with that sort of openness. It can't be, we have to do this if you don't agree with us, you must hate children. So what would it be like to say, okay, who, let's, let's talk about this pool? Um. Uh, what do we want to see happening with this pool? Who is taking advantage of this pool? Who are the kids who aren't taking advantage of this pool? If we really want to have this be a town thing, what do we need to do in order to make sure more kids are involved in the pool? Then you go and ask the kids, do you want to go to a pool or not? I mean, maybe they don't want to go to a pool, maybe they want a skate park or something, who knows? But I think starting, uh, on something that involves kids and you get the kids very much involved. But I also, okay, I'm, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. I always like to, again, this goes back to three. Let's have a discussion about what to do with funds in order for summer programs for kids. This would be one way to do it. And you do the pluses and, and pros and cons of one way, A. And then you figure B, here's another approach. Pros and cons of B. Then you take a third approach, C, pros and cons. Then you start asking people questions. Not yes or no. Not either you're with us or against us. But here we have these funds, here we have this need. Here are all these ways we could approach it, what do people think? And then have people sit down together.
Mm hmm. Interesting. So I think what I hear you saying is that, um. To, to bring it back to. The notion of debate and conversations and not debate pro and con, but. Conversation debate, um. Is that? One of the downsides to even the town meeting. Is that, or that agenda? Is your, your, it's at the point where it is one of two options. Rather than a multitude of possibilities.
Yeah, right. So I would have town halls, lots of town halls. Prior to town meeting.
Hmm, mm hmm.
Yeah, and I'm looking to Ireland for this.
Oh, okay.
Uh, when they were trying to figure out what to do about reproductive rights. When they had a constitution that prohibited abortion. The process was citizen assemblies, random appointments, ninety nine people and all these different citizen assemblies. And they got together over, uh, I can't remember, I mean, it was months. So there was an extended period of time where the same people got together, wrestled with this from all points of view. They didn't say, this is what we're going to do, are you with us or against us? They, they, they listened to the nuns, they listened to, uh, women who had had an abortion and had to leave the country to do it or. Figure out another way. Um, they talked to medical providers, they talked to children, I mean, they, they just talked to people. And then at the end of the citizen assemblies, they gave it to the parliament, which I cannot pronounce. The Irish, the Irish have their ways to name things.
Hmm.
Uh. They, uh, and they, the legislators went with what the assembly said. And they went through some of the same process, so it's not as if they just took all the evidence and assumed that the assemblies had made the right. Decision, they revisited some of the assemblies. Decision making process.
Hmm.
Uh, they went with what the assembly said, and that's why they changed the constitution.
Right. Right, hmm. So I don't know if you're familiar and I'm blanking on. The name. Uh, but Burlington has, is it the citizen? Sorry, anyone in Burlington, I'm about to totally hash this. Citizen assemblies?
Yeah, and I, I should know, Susan Clark would be able to answer this question. Yeah.
Yeah, um, but, uh, and actually I should be able to answer it better too. Uh, Emily and I did an episode on them, but it was probably about three or four years ago now. So I am forgetting, but yeah, I, if I remember it correctly, it was. Burlington's attempt to kind of do what you said, to create these assemblies, these, these neighborhood assemblies. That, uh, could help with conversation, community building, but also. Building, um. I don't want to say building policy, but helping to inform. Policy in Burlington.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I don't know enough about this, it, it makes me want to go find out. Um. The National Issues Forum has been doing a really great job, is they'll take a single issue. Break it into three different ways of going about it. I think that's the piece, is there needs to be some cognitive work done ahead of time.
Mm hmm.
So that one faction doesn't come in with all the answers. And next thing you know, deliberation is gone and it's basically just arguing whether or not to go with what the majority already wants.
Mm hmm. Or the loudest people in the room want.
Right, yeah, exactly. Uh, so there's got to be that cognitive effort ahead of time, intellectual effort to lay out several different approaches. With pros and cons, so you're not just giving people a blank sheet either. They, then they get to say things like, wow, I really like the pool. The pool sounds like a great idea, but because of the nature of pools, you have to keep putting X amount of money in every year in order to take care of this and we've got some. We need to have a lifeguard and so we've got this and this and this. Uh, and then here's another option. And what we do here, pluses and minuses. So that people start to not just be in their tribe. But thinking through a complex problem, seeing the various. Weighing and considering, what is deliberation, weighing and considering?
Mm hmm. Yeah, I, I think what this conversation is doing for me is it's reminding me of all the skills it takes. To be, um, a member of a community.
Yes.
And how we have defaulted, probably because in many ways it's easier than holding multiple points of views. This polarization. Seems simpler on the surface.
It is.
Just go in and fight for the answer you want.
Yeah.
And don't consider anything else.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I mean, you were talking about Dickens and reading Dickens. Your brain is doing a whole lot, uh, this is what, um, Mary Ann Wolfe says in her book, Reader Come Home. When you're involved in that kind of literary experience, your brain is doing all sorts of things. It's attending, remembering, connecting, inferring, analyzing, and then it's going into metaphor. Anal, analogy, it's going into the imagination. So compare reading Charles Dickens to going through your scroll on your iPhone. I want this, I want this, I don't want this, I don't want this, okay, I'll read this, no, I want, I don't want this, and we're skimming and scrolling? We're actually changing our brain.
Hmm.
She says. That we're making it less able to attend, remember, connect, infer and analyze. And we're making it very hard to do analogical reasoning.
Interesting.
I think analogical reasoning is what's key to good decision making in a democracy. You have to see yourself, your concerns in somebody else, but there's some analogy there.
Hmm.
Even though individually, you're very, very different.
Right. Hmm. Okay, so, um. I'm just looking at the, the clock and we've pulled on so many threads. And I want this to be, this conversation. To help listeners. Move forward in the, in their own communities.
Mm hmm.
In a productive and engaged way, as, as much as they can be based on whatever circumstances they're living in their lives. So where do people start? We've got a whole year until town meeting or until we have to vote by Australian ballot. We still have a lot to sort out, a lot of school budgets, you know, two, uh, what is it, one third? Of school budgets were voted down in the state, so we have school budgets for many communities on the horizon. What can we do now?
Yeah.
To help that, those processes ahead of us.
Yeah, um, well. I'm going to get back, there's lots of great ideas out there and so I'm offering one humbly. I'm not sure about this one.
Okay.
Um, I think that for, to figure out a very concrete way of going about things. So I, I referenced Susan Clark earlier, her, The Eyes Habit that she wrote with, um, Frank Bryan. Oh, I always, did I say it right? Frank Bryan, yeah, um. And, um. And she always recommends find something concrete. Intergenerational. And that that's what draws people out. So as towns go forward, I'd be. Uh, looking at the budget and maybe because there's more control over the general fund budget than the school budget, obviously. Look for some items there that are very. Look for some items there that are very concrete. They get, that are intergenerational, that have some fun attached. And then look at, okay, how can we best spend our money? How can we best spend our resources? So whether it's a pool or something in parks and recreation, that those are the types of focal points that are going to get a lot more people involved. That doesn't mean that they're going to want to use the funds in the same way. But I just think that imagining a summer day and how it could be well-spent and that what could be built to improve summertime for kids gets people in a better state of mind. So we talked about hangry and stangry. I mean, what would that be? Summary. We want people to get in a summary state of mind. Dreamy, imaginative. Possibilities and to, to do some town halls about those issues. So people are building those civic skills, holding different points of view, considering, you know, and then it all comes down to money. Limited resources. We're going to have to be more creative. We're going to have to do more with less, is my guess.
Which Vermont's quite, quite good at, unfortunately.
Well, poverty has a virtue. I mean, there's a reason poverty, chastity and humility are the three virtues. We can become better human beings.
That's hopeful. Poverty seems like a lot of work, but.
Doing, doing more with less.
Yes. And for folks who, you know, what, what do you say to folks who have for many years maybe not put their, their neck out? Because they, they, they either know or they feel that they might have an unpopular point of view. What do you, what can you say to them? Are there skills that they can practice or?
Yeah. Boy, Olga, I think you just, I, I mean, I find that's the big one now. Can we be courageous? Can we find the confidence to offer a point of view when we know no one else will like it? Or that we may be called something mean? That's just happening way too much. So I think courage is good for the soul. And um, and I think courage breeds courage. So be careful, obviously, uh, when you stick your neck out. Try it sort of on the side with somebody you only sort of know. Maybe don't go right for the school board meeting. But to just, just say, well, you know, uh, sometimes the way I leave something is I know this is a minority position. And it's a way of acknowledging the fact that I need a little courage to keep going with that sentence. That can be helpful. And, and then forgive. What else can we do? People are going to be mean. They'll say nasty things. Uh, people need to forgive me for all the mean things I've said over these many years.
Yeah, I, I have been building new appreciation for um, so I'm trained in Amherst writers and artists. Creative writing. What's that?
Pat Schneider.
Yes, Pat Schneider. And I have been talking with some of my fellow trainers or, or workshop facilitators about what do you do when, when someone is writing something that is hard? That you don't want to hear, that is triggering and, or that you really disagree with, or you even feel is inhumane. These are all words that fellow uh, uh, workshop facilitators have shared with me. And I think what it's done for me is appreciate Pat Schneider's uh, practice as she developed it. And one of the practices for people who don't know is when you talk about a piece of writing, you never say the writer. Or you never say, oh, Meg, you. You say the narrator, the main character, the, so that the, the piece of writing is standing alone, separate from the writer. And what I appreciate that is you can say something like, when the narrator said X, it felt really inhumane to me. It felt really X. And rather than saying, you know, Meg, when you said duh-duh, it made me really angry. And I felt it was inhumane. It, it just, it creates more space.
Interesting.
Conversations. And I'm, I'm really building new appreciation for that. So I'm sharing that to just say to people that may be one of the ways we need to change how we talk about ideas in, in a community setting, instead of saying, well, I disagree with you. I disagree with this idea.
And, and maybe to even humanize it. I, I've been, uh, I teach at King State now, one class. I'm so lucky to do that. And I'm um, assigning dialogues and have people say things that you strongly disagree with. Let it be on the paper. And then what's the response? Are you going to shut them down? Or can you, is there something that you're learning to uh, to see how, what they're saying can be useful for your, and I teach politics, your greater political goals. Like Baird Rustin said, if a bigot tells me the sun is in the sky, I say, yes, the sun is in the sky. And if that person is willing to work with me on improving uh, labor conditions for all Americans, I'm going to work with them. I can't afford to be picky, says Baird Rustin. So he's not, you know, averse to working with people who have uh, nasty things to say about African Americans. Cause he believes by working with them, they're going to have less nasty things to say about people like him.
That, that the working through the process will change this other person.
Especially if they can find some interest in that. And, and that's basically Derek Bell, critical race theorist, that's the interest convergence. He's making the exact same argument. Sometimes people get that element of his thinking. But he's looking for interest convergence. So who cares what people feel like? You come up with policy that's going to serve everyone's interests.
Well, I think that's powerful for a state like Vermont in that so many of our towns are so fricking small that we don't really have enough people to silo things and compartmentalize. Like, we either all got to be row in this boat or it's just going to go in circles because we just don't have enough people. Otherwise.
That's it. Yeah. When the waters come and the waters rise, we just got all got on the same boat.
Yep. Well, on that note, Meg, we've run out of time, uh, but I want to thank you today for being here, Meg Mott. If people want to learn more about you, do you have a website or?
Megmott.com. I, I'm embarrassed to say it because this is the commodification of the person. However, you can find me at Megmott.com, Constitution Wrangler.
Thank you. And as always, you can find the Montpelier Happy Hour on WVW, 107.7 LP Braddeborough, your community radio station, every Friday at 2:00 PM and rebroadcasted every Wednesday morning. And I want to thank Braddeborough Community Television for taking the video version of our show and sharing it with media centers around the state. And as always, if you want to reach out to me, you can do so at themontpelierhappyhour@gmail.com. Have a good weekend, everybody.